Our next speaker, number 21, Kim Frey.
Thank you. Kim, K-I-M, last name Frey, F-R-E-Y. I'm here tonight to ask DEC to consider pursuing a recommendation made by state comptroller, comptroller Tom DiNapoli. He suggested that a fund be set up by the state, not by the state of New York, but within the state of New York by the drillers, and I would also suggest that people have signed these contracts, to reimburse those people whose property is damaged and livelihoods changed forever by contamination that is inevitable from these drilling and wells. In many of the contracts, though not all the contracts that people have signed for drilling, there's a statement that says, "If your neighbors sue you for damages, the drilling company, the gas companies will assume that lawsuit." The problem with that for those people who have had property damage is that there's no way you're going to be able to handle a lawsuit against a multi-billion dollar company. They have teams of lawyers that work full-time. They will bankrupt you within six months with motions alone. So people will be left with no recourse if their property is damaged, hence the comptroller's suggestion that a fund be set up to compensate people. Counties ought to realize they have an investment in this as well, because if people's land is destroyed, the value of it's destroyed, if there's environmental damage to that land, you're not going to be able to sell it, and nobody would give a mortgage to anybody who would buy it. That means people are going to walk away from that land. If they walk away from the land, they don't pay the taxes, the county will lose the income, the school districts will lose the income, and the counties will often end up with properties they don't want and can't sell. So, again, this has not been talked about a lot. I hope there is no drilling, but if there is drilling, the people who caused the damage should be held accountable. And that not only includes those who drill and the gas companies who are seeking the gas, it should be the people who have signed up for the drilling. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is number 22, Rebecca Bowen.
Hi, it's R-E-B-E-C-C-A-B-O-W-E-N. Thank you to TCOG and the State Theater of Ithaca for sponsoring and holding this very important event. Okay, slow down. Okay, sorry. Short amount of time here. And thank you to our stenographer for recording our every word. I'm here because I have been a resident of Tompkins County for the last five years. I moved to New York and I'm staying in New York because I love this place and I'm committed to caring for it. I am now a landowner and I plan on living here for the rest of my life. But this is not about me, this is about all of us, and this is about the preservation of our unique ecological surroundings which shape our daily lives for everyone in New York, not just here in the Finger Lakes. And without a doubt, our county and our state and our nation and our world are moving into very desperate economic times, and we need something better than this. For those people that can't wait longer than three and a half years, are you kidding? I truly have to wonder about our ability to work together as a community to provide any kind of future potential. So I'm here to urge the DEC to consider the true and cumulative impacts and long-term impacts of this proposed practice. We are a very brilliant species of beings, and I know that we can do better than this. We can come up with better ways to stimulate our local economies, such as renewable energy, as many of you have already mentioned. So, to me, even the most remote chance of contamination of our drinking water is an unacceptable risk. The logic outlined in Section 6.1.5 of the draft ESKIS is applied to the Syracuse and New York City watersheds. That must be applied to all of New York. The proposed ban on drilling within these watersheds creates a double standard that is without scientific merit. The notion that the simple filtration systems of municipal water plants offers residents any kind of protection from the waste found in fracking fluids and flowback is nothing but a convenient political excuse. The amount of protections proposed are directly proportionate to the population affected and hold no scientific basis. The more people affected, the greater the protections. The New York City reservoirs will be protected presumably because they have no sedimentation filters, while thousands of rural water wells will be unprotected even though they have no sedimentation filters. The proposed setback of 2,000 feet around public drinking water and 500 feet around private drinking water supplies is illogical, ineffective, and without scientific merit.
Our stenographer is requesting that you slow down slightly.
I'm so sorry. Okay, so those setbacks are illogical, ineffective, and without scientific merit, because these setbacks are less than the length of the horizontal laterals that are drilled as far as one mile in each direction. So, I wish I could comment more on the contents of the ESKIS, but so much is absent that I asked the DEC to withdraw this inadequate document and create a draft that includes at a bare minimum, and I'll get as much as I can here, a long-term cumulative impact study, a human health and public health impact study, an air emissions impact study, explicit support for local municipalities and county offices who will bear the brunt of cleaning up our roads, forests, and water supplies, a requirement for full chemical disclosure for the contents and concentrations of all solids, fluids, gases used in the practice, and compliance with the Clean Water Drinking Act, Air Act, and the Clean Air Act. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that actually reminds me that Elizabeth asked that if people have written comments that have read them, to bring them up to the front so that she can fill in any details later. So anyone, we'll take a one-minute break in about 10 minutes. If anyone has those written comments, can bring them up to the front if you spoke. Our next speaker is number 23, Deborah Kippola-Dennis.
I don't think I can talk that fast. I am a landowner from Freeville. The pro-drilling crowd has referred to me, along with my concerned friends, as professional protesters. I'd like to tell you a little about us. I'm 46-years-old, a program manager. I live on 33 acres, along with my spouse, my dog, my cat, and my two goats. We moved here five years ago looking for peace, tranquility, and community. I wasn't looking for a fight. Hillary Lambert grew up in Dryden and has returned to her childhood home in search of a quiet life in a beautiful place. She loves walking in the woods, taking photos of her yard and her cats. Steward of the Keighoga watershed network, she's typically fighting invasive plants, not invasive gas companies. Russ Sheriff, research biologist with Cornell University, lives in Caroline with his wife and daughter. He and his family are concerned about the threat to air and water, and especially the threat to their community. He now fits in attending meetings and writing letters into an already very full schedule. Marie McCray, farmer and horse enthusiast, spends her summers working in the garden and putting up hay. She was bamboozled by a landsman and signed a lease. After finding out about hydro-fracking, she has spent thousands of hours and her lease profits trying to keep this industry from wrecking her life. Arrow Vino, songwriter, musician, artist, and farmer. She loves walking the trails of Tompkins County and dancing on the commons Thursday nights in the summer with 150 of her closest friends. Community is so important to Arrow, it's why she's here. Rita Rosenberg and Don Barber from Caroline, they have deep roots in the Finger Lakes. They raise their children here and plan on retiring here. Don serves as town supervisor and operates his farm with draft horses. Rita runs their bed and breakfast. They're very active in their church and their community. Why do we spend our evenings, our weekends, and our limited vacation days to go to rallies, speak at meetings, write letters, work on petition drives? Do you really think we enjoy this stuff? Let me tell you, it's a lot of work. Do we stand to make money from it? Does it advance our careers? Of course not. We are just people that feel threatened and realize we must fight to protect our homes, our families, and our communities. We in Tompkins County are doing just fine without the gas invasion. Our unemployment rate is 5.6% and has dropped over the past three months, as compared to Pennsylvania's unemployment rate of 8.3% and has risen over the past three months. We believe in sustainable growth that's in line with our community values. Tompkins County should be used as a model for economic growth throughout the state. New York should not continue to support the deception and destruction put forth by the gas industry. DEC, this document is abysmal. There's so much missing: no health study, no cumulative impact study, no mention that extreme natural gas extraction has destroyed towns and people's lives all across the nation. What makes you think it could be different here?
Our next speaker, number 24, Brent Katzmann.
I'm a realtor, I'm a green home designer, and I'm president of the Ithaca Green Building Alliance.
Brent, can you speak into the mic so folks can hear?
Sure, thanks. I'd like to address my comments at what I believe to be a principal driver of the push to develop the Marcellus shale gas resource. I believe it to be true that America's appetite for energy continues to grow, despite advancements in the efficiency of our buildings, our equipment, and our vehicles. I also believe it to be true that each of these can advance much further in reducing energy consumption, and we have our global neighbors in Europe proving it every day. With improving efficiency, a warming climate, and a soft economy, growth in U.S. natural gas consumption has fallen behind growth in production, to the point where we now have record levels of stored natural gas reserves and production capacity resulting in a price collapse. In June of 2008, about the time the Marcellus shale debate was just beginning in our area, natural gas futures contracts were priced at $13 per million BTUs. As of November 2011, these same contracts are priced at $3.40 per million BTUs, a 74% decline in value. However, the demand for natural gas in Europe, Eurasia, the Asia-Pacific, and Middle East is increasing at a pace that requires these areas of the globe to import natural gas to meet current demands. The result is that natural gas prices in Europe are above $10 per million BTUs, a threefold increase over U.S. prices, and in Asia are over $17 per million BTUs, a fivefold increase over U.S. prices. So if you're in the business of natural gas production and you can realize a fivefold price advantage by exporting your production to where demand is greater, are you going to do it? Well, of course. So what impact does this have on the industry argument that natural gas is America's energy source for the future, and developing our own natural gas resource decreases our dependence on importing foreign fossil fuel? I'd suggest that what we're really faced with is not a campaign to pull America up by its bootstraps, put Americans back to work, and advance towards energy independence. As the Marcellus shale gives up enough energy to power U.S. homes for three years, it's more likely giving up U.S. energy to power European and Asian industry and the exported jobs that go with it, and funneling profits into the pockets of the producers. And it's a limited-time offer, as Eastern Europe is expected to develop its own shale gas reserves by 2014, effectively closing the door on much of the market that U.S. producers now are taking advantage of. So what's the rush to drill now? It's because the economic advantages of this play may well get lost soon, and the attractiveness of developing the Marcellus shale begin to look a little less promising. And in the meantime, we've created thousands of temporary jobs for out-of-state workers to spoil their landscape, threaten our aquifers, sent untold additional emissions into our air from the very practice of developing the wells, and then sent this precious energy overseas. Hmm. Please come to the encore showing of Empowered, a film about people in and around Tompkins County who have discovered the viability, cost-effectiveness, and value of producing their own energy directly from the sun. This is coming Wednesday, December 7th, at Cinemopolis. There is another way.
Thank you. And Elizabeth, how are you doing?
She's here.
You ready?
I don't got me.
Okay. We're going to take a one-minute stretch break, so stay right where you are. Don't get too far away. I want to point out that there are donation jars in the back, and to bring written comments to the TCOG table or to the ushers, if you have them, and if you were a speaker, to bring them up to the front.
Well, in the interest of time, my comments are already typed up, and I can submit them, not waiting for the stenographer. Would that be useful?
Yeah.
It's up to you.
Why don't I do that?
Sure.
I'll certainly thank TCOG for hosting this. It's a great opportunity to increase access to the comment process for the draft ESKIS. My name is Michael Coplin-Galera. I have it in typing here so she can add it to her database later. I reside in Lansing, New York, which we have distinction of a many-decade history of mining. That's Cargill Salt Mine, as well as one that's experiencing the potential closing of our coal-fired power plant due to the high cost of coal extraction and transportation relative to growing demand across world markets. Both of these mining industries have important experience to offer relating to the New York State opportunities and challenges. They should be consulted for their expertise by the New York State DEC before permitting and regulation processes are finalized. Additionally, all New York State lands are the ancestral domain of First Nations peoples, and as such, existing tribal councils must be proactively consulted and sought for their advice, not reactively, regarding historical and cultural assets impacting this draft ESKIS before it is complete. To place the draft ESKIS in context, since the founding of our country, our government established a social contract to balance private self-interest with the needs of the public good. This has led to the need for environmental regulations to achieve this balance. Thankfully, at the national level, the Environmental Protection Agency wisely created an additional element to their processes and deliberations called the Science Advisory Board to avoid political influence in their processes and deliberations and recommending policies. This is to ground their efforts in the most sound, transparent, verifiable science available at the time for the health of the environment and the U.S. population, including impacts on future generations. The New York State DEC's draft ESKIS process essentially assesses and balances relative and comparative risks. Relative to that goal, in September 1990, the Science Advisory Board of the EPA titled the report, "Reducing Risk: Set Priorities and Strategies for the Environmental Protection Agency." I will submit a full copy of that report and dependencies for New York State DEC to take advantage of 21 years ago. Additionally, the New York State ESKIS is presently inadequate in analyzing comparative risks in relation to alternatives, such as investing comparable state resources in existing and known technologies for building energy efficiency measures, many of which have 100% payback per dollar invested in the first year. Our own Southern Tier Regional Economic Development Plan essentially enhanced these goals wholeheartedly. Finally, additional research results from the EPA study, and this was mentioned by Dan Lam, are expected by the end of 2012. I respectfully ask the DEC to include these findings before promulgating final permitting and drilling regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is number 26, Ed Marx.
That's E-D-M-A-R-X. I want to talk about three things very briefly: the socioeconomic analysis, cumulative impacts, and greenhouse gas emissions. The socioeconomic analysis, as many have mentioned before, is flawed in many ways. But basically, what it does is go great lengths to try to quantify the benefits, perhaps exaggerated, in no effort to quantify the adverse impacts. That's not a socioeconomic analysis. And why it's important is when you consider the cumulative impacts. The ESKIS goes to great length also to try to dissect all the little pieces of the impacts of hydraulic fracturing. But the cumulative impact is the industrialization of our landscape and our communities. And that has serious, long-term consequences for our socioeconomic future. The economy of Tompkins County and of much of the Finger Lakes region and much of upstate New York, and the economy that we envision for the future, is a sustainable economy. It's based on rural areas with sustainable agriculture and forestry, with outdoor recreation and tourism. All of those things will not be helped by hydro-fracking our landscape. It's dependent on our urban economy of higher education, high technology, renewable energy. Those industries depend on attracting the best, the brightest, and keeping them here. Will we get them to move to a hydro-fract upstate New York? No. I know that our higher education institutions have expressed some concern about this already. And finally, with greenhouse gas emissions, the ESKIS suggests that the peak production period would be about 30 years into the future from the initiation of it. That puts us in the 2040s. We have a goal in this community, and the state has also set a goal, of reducing carbon emissions 80% by 2050. How does a peak production of natural gas from our Marcellus shale, one of the highest carbon emissions production methods, equate with an 80% reduction in carbon emissions by 2050? Hydraulic fracturing is the coal top, mountaintop coal-removing, the deep-water oil drilling, the tar-sand oil extraction future for New York State. I don't think that's the future we want.
Thank you. Delores, how are you doing? Good, great. Our next speaker is number 27, Josh Dolan.
Yes, my name is Josh Dolan, J-O-S-H-D-O-L-A-N. I'm a member of Occupy Ithaca. Come by and see us after the hearing over in Dewitt Park. I'm also co-owner and head sugar maker at Sapsquatch Pure Maple Syrup in Enfield. We also produce other sustainable forest products, such as ramps, cultivated mushrooms, medicinals, and wood products. We hope to explore potential farm and community-scale energy production through pyrolysis generation of biogas, utilizing our sugar shack as an experimental station for cutting-edge energy efficiency technologies, real domestic energy. I've been sugaring for going on five years now and hope to be at it for another 50 years, as long as my back holds out. By that time, hopefully, I'll be sitting back and watching while my grown children carry buckets, feed the fire, skim the foam, draw hot syrup from the evaporator. I'm young, fit, energetic, and ambitious. My business is ready to grow, and the opportunity is ripe. New York State has by far the best potential for sugar making in the U.S., but only 2% of our maples are currently tapped. There is tremendous potential for us to become a leading producer in a syrup-starved We've been building a base of support in the community through our unique CSA model. Shares go on sale January 1st. Educational opportunities for low-income adults and children, community celebrations, and ecotourism. As a small business owner, I spend a good deal of time not just producing our golden, delicious maple syrup, but marketing, promoting, talking up, and otherwise pushing it on the community. However, I have been feeling like all this hard work, the long sleepless nights of spring, the dragging months of summer and fall peddling syrup, is a waste of time as long as New York holds the door open for the gas companies. How is it that my small, struggling business, which sustains families, preserves and enhances the landscapes, generates tourism, and educates the community, has any less value than one with a track record of worker safety violations, environmental destruction, and a history of deceit preying on landowners in order to gain access to their mineral rights? It's time to decide, New York. If you love this land, if you love our beautiful lakes and rivers and all of the bounty these provide, then we must stand up and be counted. We must throw our bodies on this machine. If Governor Cuomo is not willing to listen to the voice of the people, then we must take matters into our own hands. We hold the moral high ground, and we will grind them down in the courts. We will attack their bottom line. We will stop every truck at the border, and we will blockade every road into this state if we have to. If Governor Cuomo wants a fight, well, he's got one. If you want maple syrup, then say no to fracking. Say no to Cuomo and his presidential aspirations. Yes, by the way, we know that you took money from the Koch brothers, Mr. Cuomo. Say yes to our future. Tap maples, not Marcellus. Tap maples, not Marcellus.
Thank you. A reminder, thank you, a reminder to our speakers and our audience that to speak clearly and slowly for the stenographer, and also to keep any comments that you have from the audience non-verbal or non-audible. Our next speaker is number 28, Wes Gillingham.
My name is Wes Gillingham. I'm the program director at Catsco Mountain Keeper. That's W-E-S-G-I-L-L-I-N-G-H-A-M. First, I want to thank Ithaca for being 10 square miles of sanity in an insane proposal. At Mountain Keeper, we will be submitting written technical comments. The last time, we put in 300 pages on your 850-page document. Now we've got 1,500-plus regulations. Let's see what we'll do this time. It was 850 pages last time to rationalize and stage the colonization of New York with an insane industry. We will point out again that there's no adequate plan to deal with the enormous amount of poisonous hazardous waste, which you are still classifying as industrial waste. Do you really think written comments and all the hearings that have happened across this state is what... Andrew, are you listening? Hazardous waste is hazardous waste! Change that tomorrow! I'm going to read this thing one more time. I read this at every hearing. Fracturing by injecting fluids into the shale will cause conditions that make transport of contaminants from the shale to surface aquifers possible. You can put parentheses. I'm saying it louder. The DSGIS presents an erroneous analysis that concludes that contaminants in the shale are isolated and cannot reach surface water aquifers. This is scientifically documented, modeled over and over again. We'll put many more models and pages in this time. Please listen, Mr. Cuomo. If you had had, if you had half a political backbone that you claim to have, you would have already changed that hazardous waste piece, and you would have listened to that scientific modeling. Okay, the gas industry has created a monster in New York State. But it's a benevolent monster. It's a monster that wants to protect its backyard. It's a monster that wants to protect the Finger Lakes, the Catskills, the Southern Tier. This monster is made up of shale shock, NIRAD, GDAC, CPNY, frac action, DSC, Catskill citizens, brisk. It's time, Mr. Cuomo, to wake up and smell the coffee before it smells like frac fluid. This is a political monster you can't ignore. I just came from all the other hearings across New York State, and I am incredibly, incredibly excited, because I saw hundreds and thousands of people across the state articulate this document's a piece of crap. Thank you, New York!
Thank you. Our next speaker is number 29, Scott Norren.
I'm Dr. Scott Norren, spelled D-R, just kidding. I'm a Democratic U.S. Senate candidate. Do you feel lucky about the ESKIS process? That's what Clint Eastwood says. When fracking for natural gas is approved in New York State, what member of Congress that you elected will fight for a retroactive ban and halt any new projects? I called for it in 2009. It's on my website. One of our U.S. senators has said that if fracking can be done safely, it could be an economic boon to New York State. She has now flatly called for an end to the process in ESKIS and to ban fracking. Maurice Hinchey wants all the safeguards in place, including the gas company exemption from the Clean Water Act. Sure, I want that too. But unlike both of them, I want to write the bill to ban fracking federally. I don't want mitigation, oversight, or ESKIS faulty documents, as Bob Howard discussed. Again, this is the rhetoric of safe fracking. To say this isn't political is hogwash. Mr. Martens, which many people here may or may not know, the head of the DC is the head of the New York League of Conservation Voters. Truck pollution, water contamination, not dedicating massive efforts on small and large alternative energy projects, negative effects on business and tourism, expensive lawsuits in many directions, to say the least, are among the benefits of fracking. ESKIS has not been effective in allaying concerns for any of those issues. ESKIS has not adequately addressed how truck traffic will cause economic decline in the Finger Lakes. I am a healthcare provider for over two decades, helping people stay healthy. I'm among the many healthcare providers who are well aware that fracking may be associated with causing serious health issues, and I'm against this fossil fuel debacle. Healthcare providers have not been given full coverage in ESKIS. Cornell University, run by a former healthcare provider... would be at great risk if a spill contaminates their water supply. This would be a ghost town without Cornell University. I agree with local bans, but ESGEIST should be thrown out and never revived. Let's build solar-powered electric charging stations instead of gas stations or natural gas stations. So you need to ask yourself, do you want a real progressive direction for energy production in the state and country? I am not for additional ESGEIST paperwork. I think the ESGEIST process should be ended, fracking not allowed in New York State, and other states follow our course. Ask yourself again before next year, do you feel lucky with DEC and ESGEIST? Pick your friends wisely. So far, your friends are bought and paid for.
Thank you. Our next speaker is number 30, Dan Marsiglio.
Hi, my name is Dan Marsiglio, D-A-N-M-A-R-S-I-G-L-I-O. And I'm a farmer about 20 miles north of Hancock. I'm a farmer about 20 miles north of Hancock in the town of Walton. We're in the New York City watershed, and I can tell you, in the seven years that my wife and I, and my parents, and my children have been farming, it's been very difficult. We raise a diverse organic livestock, set of animals, and we grow vegetables. It's really, really difficult, and it's hard to make money. And we're always looking for ways to diversify our farm. Well, here's one of them. Right? Am I right? Is this a way to diversify farming and keep farmers viable in the state? All right, we can make a little extra money, maybe a lot of extra money. All right, I can't, I've tipped my hand. This is a disaster. And this is not the solution. This is not the solution that we're looking for. And I'll tell you a little story about the last two and a half years of my life in the watershed. My wife and I have diversified our farm with agritourism, inviting people from other parts of the state, mostly New York City, to come and join us on the farm and to experience farm life, and to get invested in not only their watershed, but their food shed as well. It's taken us two and a half years to become truly legal because we work under the governance of the DEP as well as the DEC and other organizations that would protect our air, land, and water within the watershed and within New York State. It's taken us two and a half years because, I'll paint a quick picture for you, but people who are not familiar with the watershed and how that's regulated and what that means for New York City. Rain falls on the hill above our farm. It runs into a creek, which runs to a larger river, which makes its way to a reservoir, which goes into a pipe and goes 120 miles down to New York City. Every time that we want to cover a roadway with a little bit of gravel, okay, we are required to file a stormwater runoff, impervious surface documentation to prove that we're not going to damage the water. That water is metered in the city, and that money is used to buy land upstate to protect the water. That's how serious this is for the people of New York City. Why is the rest of New York being treated like second-rate citizens? I ask you that. If every drop of water that passes, that goes through my farm is regulated to that degree, for me to set up four tents for people to come visit my farm, and it takes me two and a half years to make that happen, why does it take any more than the adherence to our basic public health code for New York to protect our land and water? That's all the ESGEIST has to address, is mandate that the public health code that already exists is followed to the letter of the law. I was told by members of the DEP that the reason we're under such scrutiny is because we're in the watershed. All we have to do is make sure that the rest of the state, the rest of the citizens, are treated with the same respect and dignity that the people of New York City are, and this is solved.
Thank you.[1798.31]